Where they really are as opposed to kind of, there wasn't enough data yet. So it also looks like science and social studies are dropping. At least potentially. Is there any comment on that?
That is a good question. Although, social studies, we did see a decent turnaround from progress reports to Q1. So.
Is the second progress report, is that a separate report about progress since the close of grades for quarter one?
So this is just probably failing very strongly.
This is not a cumulative?
Correct.
Thing. So Q1 stands essentially alone. And then we, Q2 will also stand alone?
Right. That is correct.
Although we could actually, Q2 could stand alone and then we would have a cumulative for the first semester as well. If we look at it that way. But again, just a reminder that the data that's summarized in the third set of graphs is really the same data, they're the same data sets we looked at last quarter. So there isn't anything different that we're looking at now, just in a, in a different form.
Well, the thing that was noticeable beyond the, the grades was the drop off in attendance. We started up strongly and then seemed to have gone significantly south. Is that still the case, drop off in predictor of grades?
Yeah, so, so there is, yeah, there is a mix of attendance. And Jacqueen is going to speak to that more over, over sort of presentation. Any other questions?
My question is, historically, at the end of this quarter, there's a flurry of activity for students able to recover, finish assignments that may, at the five-week mark, be zeros because they haven't turned anything in. But then all of a sudden, they see the progress report and they push and get their work in, so their grade may change. Because of course, a zero draws you down a lot further than a sixty-five draws you down. Is that still the case here where people, if they don't turn the grades in or the projects in, they still have an opportunity to turn it in by the end of the quarter to be graded?
Yes.
So that could be some of that impact as well, just kids being kids and not doing what they're supposed to do.
And David, David's going to be speaking about the after-school, Saturday school program and how they're working on that.
There's some reason to expect that if you look between the progress reports for first and then the actual grades, except for English. I mean, the students who were on the breakpoint, in general, came up with better half, right? So that is, that's good. But we do have still a cause of concern because our, you know, our yellow gaps there. I mean, some of the students who are currently failing are likely to get their work in too. That is a point of concern, right, that those developing ranges are below our target line of seventy-five percent. Are we ready for the next slide?
Yep.
Okay. And Kathy's not here to speak about this. So I don't have a lot of information to give to this in terms of like action plans or descriptions, but I'm just sort of presenting the data. I'm looking at now just students with IEPs or five or fours, year-to-date, you know, overall performance compared to the rest of the school. Well, seeing the previous slide, is there any high IEP and five or fours?
Is this a subset of the other ones? So the other one was the entire school?
Including the students and then still pulling high IEP and five or fours.
So this might suggest that it's students with IEPs that are a big portion of that dropping English grade?
Yes. That's, that's a very good observation. And of course, one point of concern for us was math scores, right, obviously.
A number, a large number of these students are probably, oh wait, sorry, some of these students are the ones who transferred.
Yes. Although I think the size number was six. So it's not actually an overly large amount that transferred.
Not.
Yeah, come to think of it, I think six transferred.
We're only talking about one grade level. This is the, these are all students in the school.
The whole school? Other questions about this slide? Okay, that's going on.
How many students is that? Is that?
Forty-one.
So, so I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So progress report number one, a hundred percent of the students who have, are IEP or five or four, were passing?
Yeah, and again, that's most likely because my progress reports quarter one came relatively early this year. It's because it shifted a little because of the sense of placement intensive at the beginning of the year. So we still sent progress reports out sort of the four-week point, I believe, if I remember correctly. But that meant-
That accounts for the date disparity.
Exactly. So projects hadn't come back yet, right? They may have been assigned, they may have been like started to come back in, but we didn't have projects graded in the English department.
Where, where would we see the Read 180?
So the Read 180, I believe, talking to Kathy, it's a little early to see strong results from that. So we're looking sort of longitudinally over the course of the year.
I think actually you wouldn't see any results yet, and even in the progress report too. You won't, you won't, we won't see that really until the end of this quarter.
Did, because relative to the, yeah, because relative to the start of Read 180, that was-
Right. We started Read 180 at the beginning of January, and these progress reports would have gone through December.
Even before them, yeah.
So this is before. This is prior to.
Well, this may be used, right, we might consider this a benchmark part of Read 180, like this is the last data point we have before the program started. All school regions readiness, again. And note, this is going to tie into like the other part of my presentation, we have concern about mathematics, mathematics readiness. Except for math, I mean, the whole school is just a hair below our target, where we'd like it to be, regions readiness. Mathematics considerably below, and so that's going to tie into talks about efforts at math department. To direct about that. And then IEP, five or four regions readiness, again, we have a bit of a gap there.
So I keep asking this, questions? How do we measure regions readiness? What's the measure?
So the teachers in their class use a mastery checker based on regions of questions. And they give that quarterly. And that has a, gives a readiness score percentile for each student. But, I mean, we translate essentially to a yes, no. Are they on pace or are they not on pace?
What's the cutoff for that yes?
It's going, it's going to depend on class.
Well, if it's a passing grade of sixty-five or higher, then we-
Sixty-five, adjusted, though, right? So for instance, mathematics, like a raw score of thirty-three will get you a passing, adjusted grade in the Algebra I regions, but it's higher for the Algebra II regions, right? Any other questions? Here. So this led us to thinking about mathematics, because we took a pretty close look earlier in the year at English and literacy skills and how they're doing. And with their help, we instituted the Read 180 program. So looking at mathematics and taking a look at the aggregate math data for the students, and forgive me for flipping the charts, right? So that now red is on the bottom, but like that's our concern, right, the percentage of our students who are below proficiency. So math testing has five ranges, low, low average, average, average high, high. And I, for simplicity, I bundled average and above into the green section. And as you can see, over sixty-five percent of our ninth grade students are scoring, scoring low to low average in their math proficiency. One thing that you should take into account here is that math data does not segment out by cohort for us. So if a student failed ninth grade last year, right, they're bundled into the ninth grade this year. Which accounts for some of that, all the negative.
You know, this is at the beginning of the school year too.
Right, this is the very beginning of the school. So they've forgotten everything over the two months summer break, right, they've come in just raw, we sat them down and said, here's your math data.
I don't understand that. You just have to go through it again. Why? Early means what? They took the test?
They took the test as they were coming into the school year, so this doesn't reflect instruction, this reflects baseline where they were coming in at the beginning of school year before, prior to the start of classes.
For the vast majority of the ninth graders, right, they have not been our students before.
So this is a measure of readiness or something?
Exactly.
Not really?
Yeah. No, but it's important to make that distinction. That this is a measure of our students readiness. And talking to the members of math department, this is somewhat consistent to what they've seen in other school districts. Right, it's a, something that is not new to new, it's right that incoming freshmen are not prepared for high school math. Often there's social promotion in real school and other factors. We're gonna have to get too deep into this. So Tina and the math department and David Stride, we've all been reading, Chrissy Sharp as well, developing solutions for this. And we're using the approach to literature issues and your, as a model. We're looking for a cost-effective solution to help students recover and just get a leg up on their mathematical skills. So our first plan, we went out and we were looking for a solutions platform. There are many programs that provide the students with specific and targeted feedback, right? That they'll take some kind of diagnostic and it will break down all the skills associated with that diagnostic. And if the student is not able to do a particular skill, they check the subset of skills associated with that task, like this is elementary school example, but they cannot, or middle school, they can't do long division, right? Well, is it because they don't know addition or subtraction? Let's break that down and find out. Because you can drill a skill as much as you want, but if they don't have the prerequisite skills, they're not going to be able to do it, or at least not understand it. So we're looking for something that students, gives them that feedback and also that they can work on independently if they want, right, outside of the school. But something that is also reasonably cost-effective. So unless we see something absolutely amazing that we, you know, somehow don't think we can live without, we don't expect to have this pass the threshold, but it has to come to the board, right, in terms of cost. And there are, some of the solutions everywhere I looked at are do seem to be the price. And the way we're gonna test this is in Ron's pre-algebra classes. He's going to ask them to test on block days, one of these platforms, for the next four subsequent block days in February. And give feedback. We've already designed a survey to get their feedback on it, just get a feel for that, for how much they like these solutions. Because part of it is if the students approve it, like if the students say that this is a solution that works for them, we're more likely to have buy-in participation and part of the students. So these are our top four, and we'll let you know how it goes. Questions about this?
Do you want online?
Yes, that's one of our, one of our requirements is online, so that students could work on these skills at home if they want to. And then another thing we're doing is in terms of professional development, this coming Wednesday, there's a professional development opportunity at Common Ground, Nevada, Connecticut, called City Math. And the whole math department will be going. Tina, you want to go with us?
I'm not a personal person.
Okay, good. So we're taking a bit of a field trip. It's a morning-long professional development opportunity. And I actually have a very short video, if you're interested in watching.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
One way that we use LA is our Green Ambassadors program.
So we teach our city through comprehensive use of zoo.
We start right off with our ninth graders learning about the river and the river watershed. We incorporate field work rather than field trips.
Los Angeles is just another classroom for environmental charter high school.
So I'm just gonna walk around and announce what's at the table, and I'm gonna ask the person who's responsible for that curriculum to like, give the one-sentence version of what it is.
So if you're interested in themes, essential questions, guiding questions, this is your team.
And what's, and what's the topic?
Uh, it is about how LA has changed over time.
There, there's, there's a lot to do, but I think just continuing to take risks and push them up and make sure we're offering opportunities for students to take action.
What we're really focused on is really trying to connect with kids in ways that seems really relevant to them. Having an arena kind of like we have right now, having an opportunity to exchange those sort of structures and get an understanding so that there's groundwork laid for interdisciplinary collaboration.
So we're much in line with what we're trying to do. So we're very excited about that opportunity. The final thing, data point, and then a sort of transition into a data presentation, has to do with usage of the STAR program, the students taking active roles after school program. In terms of efficacy, that data is going to come when we have our quarter-two grades. I plan to do a comparison, quarter-two grade versus quarter-one grade, and see if there's a correlation between, your difference between your Q2 grade and your Q1 grade and your attendance at STAR. So that gives some pretty accurate data in terms of STAR effectiveness. But one thing we've noticed in terms of usage, these are students who received a failing grade in that core subject class quarter one, and the percentage of which used the STAR program after. These are students that we really would like to be using this program, assuming that it's effective. And as we can see, less than half, fewer than half of our students are not using the program after getting a failing grade in that subject area quarter one. So they're students who are not taking advantage of the resources that we're offering them. So that's, that's something that we're going to need to work on. Although, we did know that math is the highest one. And so that if a student failed their math class quarter one, they're more likely than other classes to take advantage of this after school.
What do you have in mind when you say you're going to work on it? What's that?
Well, that's the transition into data. So, um, are there any questions I can answer for you for this part? Okay, thank you very much for your time. David, it's all you?
Hello, everyone. I have something I wrote up that we could pass down, that we'll all save a page literally. So my name is David Sanders. I came on as a special education teacher, but another one of my roles is that I serve me at the STAR program. Free evenings a week plus on every other Saturday. And the main purpose of the program is to give additional resources and time in the school structure to students who are struggling and want to learn content. And since coming on in November, basically, we've been seeing our numbers grow. And though we are at less than half, the other way to look at that is that we are approaching at this point, half the students who are failing a subject are voluntarily staying for an extended school day. And some may be coming on for a Saturday. And that in itself is something good to work out from, being that we already have that number. These children aren't being forced to stay, but it's simply up to their own decision to improve their grade that we do have them. But as was mentioned before, we do want that to be more higher. And it's already a good indicator that in the subject that is the most concerned, math, we are already pushing beyond into the majority. And obviously, this is not where we're going to want to stop and be content, we want to go further from there. Now, the way that we really have to attract students is that we put up, A, a lot of flyers and try to advertise it. We do offer snacks, brain food, you know. We have tutors and mentors come from local colleges whose expertise in various content, including math, are at our disposal, and we're really thankful for them. And in terms of like our action goals to get that number even higher, we've been working on a cumulative reward system where the incentive to have the student come is that if they come repeatedly and it's confirmed by the teacher, there's a reward, that they may have some points raised on a quiz or some grievance of a missing homework forgiven. Because the incentive is the more they come, the more work they're catching up in. We'll help them a little bit too. So that it's very symbiotic and that, you know, they're helping us by letting us help them. On top of that, I'm also a social studies teacher, so I have been working very closely with those who need help in that related topic. But in terms of math, because most children compared to other contents are struggling, it's really reassuring at this point that we already have that as our highest percentage of those attending. So basically, at this point, we're ready, in terms of the whole student body, one-third, thirty-three percent voluntarily come to stay after school. So that's something significant, that we don't even have to really have any kind of action to make them. This is a voluntary motion on their part to come stay with us. And as you can see in the other contents, we are approaching half, and luckily in math, we're already over half. So those are really good indicators right there. In terms of how to get that number higher, we basically are going to be using something along the lines of that cumulative reward system. And also, because of the scale of our school, the fact that we do not have hundreds if not thousands of individuals, that for those who really should be coming to the program that have not gotten there yet, we can work with the content teachers and the parents to make very individualized plans in terms of how can we get them to stay after? How can we get them to give us an extra hour and a half every other day to help their grades raise up and become more successful? And we're getting there. So by taking over the program, our numbers have grown. And we basically have a pretty steady incline at this point. But obviously, we want that number to go higher. So that's why we continuously brainstorm with suggestions and, you know, means of action that we hope to bring them in. And we listen for student feedback in terms of what they need from us. And we really are lucky to have that ability, that there are so many staffs as student ratio because of our size, that we really can hear every individual. And if someone has a certain need or a transportation issue or something really particular to them, then I hope to be a number that falls into a crack or a statistic and we can one-on-one kind of work a solution out. And since I've taken on the program, my goal is basically to see all of our contents go into the strong majority, that is our goal. And we have basically plans in action that we are both using right now, trying to bring to effect against our targets. Can see here. Are there any other questions?
Has there been any discussion of earning the social opportunities? So that if you, I'll just say this clearly, if you're doing poorly, you are risking social opportunities like proms?
Oh, yes.
And then you can run back by, definitely, or maybe in the fall?
Those steps in many ways are already in place. If a student is not succeeding in their classes, extra things like sports, extracurricular activities, dances and proms, those are jeopardized because those are kind of like luxuries and things that we want, but we need them and they need to pass all our classes to succeed. So those are measures that we do employ, and they work because children want to play sports, they want to stage clubs, they want to basically know that they can go to the prom that they're already talking about at this point of the year. So those steps are being taken into account and are used in terms of how to, you know, kind of overcarry over them.
Is attendance in that case as well, failing to attend jeopardizes your social?
You mean in the STAR program?
No, actually, I'm broadening it.
Broaden again. Attendance?
Essentially, that, I'm all there.
And we do have consequences for students that do not have steady attendance.
Well, I'm asking specifically if you know whether social opportunities are linked to good attendance.
My field of expertise is really within the STAR program. That might be more of a disciplinary nature outside of the STAR program. But as far as I know, if they do not have, you know, adequate attendance, especially unexcused, they do jeopardize their standing in terms of their social engagements that they would want to have.
I think Jacqueen can speak to that.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions for David? One or three David's now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really great to meet you all.
Jacqueen, would you like to do your brand?
Trying to get this quick, answer questions, if I could, and then I had a letter, on the top, you see a letter support? To parents for students that makes a difference in attendance, especially linked with our attendance issues from last year. So, and can you just take a quick look at, this is in the goal study. At this point, fifteen of the fourteen, of the nineteen, if there is that issue since last year, we've been receiving this letter. I'm gonna go over some of those improvements. Joe, you mentioned some of the attendance issue that were coming up. It was probably about maybe two months ago, we started to see a dip as the eighteen, because we had a whole monthly attendance, we started to see it was an issue. I want to mention also, Shelley and I started working on a lot of issues coming up in the attendance. Basically, if a student did not show up in the first period, it was marking them absent for the whole day. So our all-day absences looked much higher than they actually were. If they missed the first period, they showed up late, or obviously, they didn't leave for the first period. And that could, if they weren't marked present, then that would basically come as an all-day absence. So I basically went and did some corrections, and if you look on the second sheet here, this is, the students, I have the number here. We have nineteen students that I gave you in the beginning of the year that were problematic from the previous year. We had seen significant missed classes, poor grades, late on tasks. So you can see here, I have, if you guys turn around on the second page, here we go. So two thousand fourteen and fifteen, that was the previous year, these are the statistics. And I'm not doing missed classes this time, I'm doing whole days. We're just dealing with whole missed days here. So you can see there, twenty missed days last year, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, seventeen. One student had ninety missed days. So these are our most significant outliers for the previous years. And then two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we can see how they've improved this year. There's a couple of issues here, and we're gonna talk more about some of the major interventions that have taken place, but I want to mention some of the major improvements. Again, this is after making some corrections based on that first period that we marked absent all day long, but then we found out that they hadn't missed the whole day. Just that school tool wasn't reporting it to our spreadsheet properly. So Shelley's working that issue out with Chris, and we can get accurate data on that. Rather than just the first period misses, you know, getting accurate whether they were there or not the whole day. But school tool does allow us, without the exception, without the spreadsheet, to go in and take an accurate look at whether they missed the first class or not, we can see class by class. So I was able to do that work. It took a little longer, but at least it gave us accurate viewpoint. So, so student one, issue right there, thirteen, already on pace halfway through the year to have twenty-six. He was an issue last year, issue this year. I'm gonna go over his because I think that was an important intervention that we did. And if you need, what I've done is the numbers on that sheet are associated to the actual intervention. So if you guys want an extra copy of that, I've also made that available. But just to let you know what we did, I'm gonna say it out loud, we're dealing with number one. One and I met with his family to determine best course of action at the beginning of January, so this was recently. At this time, one is indicated, one was indicating that he wanted to possibly drop out of school and get his GED. This writer works with Tina in the Ascend program. Ascend is the program that Millie's been working with the school. They were working mainly females of color, but they're really able to wanting to work with all students of color. So they, Millie reached out to me and said, I want the young men of color to work with these programs as well. To devise a plan that would include some study abroad opportunities. The young man indicated that he just feels like stuck in Ithaca. He's never been out of, really traveled outside of Ithaca, really wants to experience some other things in the world. And wants to take his GED essentially- And wants to take his GED essentially to be an opportunity to get into college and get into a study abroad program rather than have to stick it out in high school for another two years. So during our listening session, we became apparent. So when I mentioned that there may be opportunities for him to travel, he perked right up, meaning in school and travel. Working with the Ascend program, potentially the Rotary Club, there's some connections there. He has since been much better with attendance. We made a deal that if you can get all, no lower than a C plus, As and Bs, then what we'll do is work on to travel, broad opportunities for you that I've been connecting with Cornell on. So he's been in the last, since the beginning of January, he has been doing everything he can. He's been here every day, he hasn't missed a class. So that incentive totally made a difference. So those thirteen classes were before the beginning of January. So that's the type of RTI response intervention that we've been doing with that issue. Okay, so number two, you can see seventeen missed days, now they only have five. Okay, that's a significant improvement. The most significant is the ninety to now only ten missed classes. And these are again, students that we did contracts with in the beginning of the year. They signed contracts, we signed a contract, teachers signed a contract indicating that this is what I'm going to do attendance-wise. This is how the school is going to serve you, this is what the parents are going to do. Everybody's going to work as a team. We had those needs with the families at the beginning of the year. So that obviously had a significant impact on those students. So ninety to only ten missed classes, I mean missed, sorry, missed days of school. Ten, even though it's better, ten missed days of school, by the end of the year, could be twenty. Twenty according to our, according to our code of conduct would then put them in a field to potentially lose credit for their classes and their subjects. The year, remember last year, what we had is five missed classes would lead to loss of, loss of credit for a course. If they had more than five missed classes in any given course, they could potentially, they would fail the course. This year, we decided to do twenty across the year. So right now, this student is in line to potentially lose credit. Even though they're doing better than ninety at ten, we still need to have a mid-year, that's what I wrote on there, put a little asterisk, mid-year RTI. So I have indicated what I've done with that student. She has the most drastic improvement out of any student, going from ninety absences in a year to ten thus far. This issue is, it's an improvement, but ten is still an issue as well that happens in the year. After meeting with her father and mother, it's become obvious that mom's work schedule does not create the best opportunity for her to be held accountable to show up to school on time. The fathers agree that the student will move in with him, since he comes and he works right down here at the hotel, he will drop her off to school every day. The mothers agree with that. So what we're going to do is change her placement that will allow her to get to school. Because what happens is the mom works night shifts, she's sleeping in, you know, daughter can sleep in by the time she wakes up. It's already, you know, one in the afternoon, she doesn't want to drive her work, I mean, into school, so she doesn't have to come. So we're going to have a change of living arrangement there that we helps work on. I'm going to kind of speed through this. Number five, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, I was just going to say maybe just focus on a few that you have particular significance.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do.
And avoiding any personal.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, yeah, workplace and everything else. Thank you. I apologize. So you can see number five, asterisk, where I put an asterisk next to it, we've seen again, a significant improvement. Forty-four absences from the previous year. Thirteen this year, which again is much better, but we have significant problems. That student and the parent, I have had issues getting in touch with the parent, but they are coming in. I'm arranging a time to have a meeting with them. We'll work it out. In general, I think one of the things that I'm seeing right now off the bat is that, you know, Tina's concept, as you can see, of making sure we have this contract, this parental agreement, has really made the major change. Previous year, I had thought if we say a student misses five classes and they lose credit, that will across the board improve attendance. We saw some minor improvements. But I think this idea of doing these RTIs and interventions, more significantly working with the families, increases our communication with the families and is obviously showing major changes and major shifts. So hopefully, we'll continue to see a trend of improvement in attendance. Response to intervention. So if there's a major issue, yes.
Jacque. What's the issue with student thirteen? Because they've gone from fifteen down to six, but they.
Yes. This student is actually coming in tomorrow at four PM to meet with the parents, both parents, Chris and myself, to go over this particular issue. Interestingly, this student is, is actually a very good student academically, meaning they have the capacity to do the work. They can, you know, this new Google Classroom has led to a whole host. And we're seeing this, this is a trend also, I've been talking to some people over at the high school. There are students who feel like they can just, you know, skip classes, they don't have to do the work. What's the big deal? I don't have to be at school. So this is a student who's been as stubborn as possible, feeling like they are, you know, they're a top-level academic student. Why is it so comfortable? I can do the work, why do we need to be present? So what we're going to do tomorrow with the parents is say, you know, graduate from New Roots, just because you can do the academic work, we are a learning community, being present is really critical. So that's the issue there, is a kind of senioritis. Sorry, I'm not supposed to give specifics, but, you know, I'm going to graduate, I've already got my stuff together, I'm already beyond New Roots. You still have a responsibility in community.
I'm still a little confused on the shift from monitoring periods' absence versus days' absence. This data is days' absence, but what does it mean? You're saying if a person is here, say after second period, they're here.
But does that mean they're still skipping classes?
Well, that's what I don't understand what this measure is. Is this, they're here some of the time or not? You're still lost as to what the data actually helps us understand.
Well, it helps you understand that, I just wanted to look at all days, you know, if they're missing a whole day. I mean, that's really significant. If they're not here at all, then that, you know, they're not in school. And I was looking at that period, but then I'm looking with the period down, and there's also days that they just weren't in school. You know, so it's really two different fields of knowledge. And before I gave you the period knowledge, I wanted to kind of give you an indication. Not only were these students missing periods, they were here, but some of them were just not even here at school at all.
Okay, so let me see if I got it. Twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, these are full days of absence, or these are just first-period absences?
Full days of absences without, it looked like more in our Excel spreadsheet, but when I went in and actually looked at it.
If they showed for any period during the day, they got credit for the day.
Yep. They got marked.
All right, and so that's second column is the same thing.
Yep.
Is there, are you seeing a correlation between performance and attendance?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, the letter indicates that. I looked at the, the students that are showing, are going to be receiving this letter, significantly improved in attendance. They, all of them have shown academic improvement from the previous year. I mean, when they say attendance is the number one indicator, they're not lying. It's absolutely true. So that's why this letter is going to say, thank you for your student attending more. And you're seeing that they're doing better academically because of that.
And I'll say, I suspect for everybody, thank you for the intensity at which you're following up on attendance. Everybody, but you're a point person.
I'd say thank you for correcting the data. Because I say, that beats a student up when they know they've been here for classes and just because they missed the first class, they were late past whenever attendance is taken, they're losing it. And that can be very discouraging, I think.
And it actually happened with the student that Peter was mentioning. They had, it looked like forty-three absences. And so I was contacting the family and contacting that student, saying, you're forty-three. And I had to really go back to the family and apologize, but it used to be that, you know, this is an issue you need to be here the first period, that is something we want to work on, it's kind of like a homeroom. But at the same time, we do want to give them credit when they are here. So that's part of what we're going to do with the family tomorrow, is working on that correction with the family. So unfortunate occurrence there. Thank you.
All right. Now we'll do a clear of, should we do this one or do we start?
I'll add, it's pretty short, and then I just wanted to do an update about student council. And so we do now have a student council. Each advisory, my advisory, I don't know, nine, ten, thirty, ten advisors. Each advisory uses dynamic governance to elect the student representatives to student council. So we should now have ten members of student council who will meet once a week. Currently, the plans can meet on Fridays, but we recently rescheduled the ends of Tuesdays and Thursdays for more time for activities and clubs. So it's a possibility that they'll be meeting then. And so the student council's role will be to respond to students' needs and also they'll be in charge of funds that they'll then allocate based on student projects. And I'm surprised, I know those funds don't exist yet, but we have a couple of parents who are excited about helping with fundraising and supporting student council. So that they'll have some actual money to go their way around and to allocate for students. We've already been talking about some possible things that that might go towards, including the track team. And then the representative council, which is the group of students that, because it's on Fridays to get ready for Monday, student meetings, still be meeting. There's actually a lot of overlap between that group and the student council. So I suspect that those groups will be working pretty closely to make sure that the things that are discussed in student meetings will reflect what student council's been hearing and vice versa. So we look forward to it. And I was elected on the student council, so I'll be able to give you a good sense of what's going on there. And I think we'll probably meet for the first time next week.
So Monday meetings are all school, or is this the one that's broken up?
Yeah, so it's usually at all school. And then nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and it goes to the second.
So all school twice a month. Yeah, so it's been a, you mentioned that you had some feedback about the dynamic governance election process.
Yeah, it was the first time that a lot of groups had used it, so. For some groups, it worked really well. I think others had a little more challenge. They worked it down to two or four candidates and then had a hard time deciding who was better. And I think the advisory leaders had a really strong role there, deciding how to move forward when they were sort of in gridlock. And so that went well. And some advisories, I believe, are still working on to make sure that they get the most viable candidate. But I think everyone I talked to was taking the process very seriously.
Great, thank you very much. Tina, is there a copy of the minutes?
Because we're not about.
Yes, yes.
All right, so. Jacque, I like having a student council, too, right? So we are moving now to our principal report.
Great, so I'm going to focus on talking about our enrollment trends as of mid-year and our outreach trends for this one. So as we look at our enrollment, we continue to see the same issues in terms of mobility that we had experienced in the, as we've experienced in the past. We had, we've had, although it's actually very interesting, because this year, we had, we had far fewer students coming in during the first semester until the end of the semester. So historically, we've been servicing a stable stream coming in and students leaving throughout the fall. This year, we had much more of a settling out at the beginning of the school year. We had students that were leaving, leaving the school after a few weeks, or students that were enrolled but didn't end up attending, but we didn't realize, you know, we can't legally make any change in their enrollment status until we've absolutely verified that either from the family that they're not coming back or they go for over twenty days of unexcused absences without any attendance. So one thing that you'll see as we get into the second half of the year is that our enrollment numbers adjust retroactively because there may be a student who is still on enrolls at a time that we made a report, but who has been taken off because they stopped attending. So at any rate, so we had, we have six new students that are coming in at the beginning of this next quarter. And three are, that are coming to us from IHS, one from Broden, and two that are formerly home-school students that are joining us. We had a total of sixteen students who withdraw after the start of the school year. And looking at those trends, they were, nine of those students were students that, actually, ten students stopped, either left almost immediately or didn't attend. Like, for instance, we had one young man who had attended years last year, he was seventeen and a half, still working on his ninth grade requirements, decided that he was not going to return to school. Did really make that official, and also he took a great time and decided that he was moving on to something else. We also had two students who attended the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year who were struggling academically, that left to go to both these programs. And three new students who came to us from rural districts that were in ninth and tenth grade, who returned to their home district citing transportation issues in the length of school year. So, I mean, and which is, for many of the students who come to us from, you know, from outside of Ithaca, some of them are leaving their homes at like six-thirty in the morning and arriving until about six o'clock at night. And that's even foregoing things like the STAR program because they just can't afford the transportation. So, so the conclusion, you know, looking at that mobility, the conclusion that we are coming to is that our outreach strategy is actually perfectly what we need to be doing, which is really publicizing and making sure that the community knows about the kinds of educational opportunities that we offer here, what kinds of outcomes that we have in terms of what students choose to do after they graduate, they go on to college. So that people really get a better sense of like, what's a, what's a good fit with New Roots? And what would compel me to check out New Roots, even if I, you know, am relatively satisfied wherever I am. Because clearly, you know, we need to, it's really, our mobility that we're seeing is really about fit. So we continue to look for ways to, to help people, help draw people in so that they can assess whether or not New Roots is a good one. So one of the ways that we're doing that is we're.
So, tentatively, how many of the sixteen who left are gone?
I was going to answer that question, I just need to count for a second. Two. Possibly three. But I think they're coming back, and for different cohorts. So, one project, I think you all saw this last version of the newsletter that we put out during the summer. We got a lot of really positive feedback to this publication, which takes an enormous amount of time and energy and talent to put together. Thank you very much, Tracy. It is very shiny. Full of photographs and stories about the, you know, all kinds of activities that students are doing, both academic programs as well as the extracurriculars. So we've been focusing in the year, pulling together the story about what's been happening in school in this first half of the school year. I have some, Tracy's been working hard to pull this all together, I have a draft version here. If anyone's interested in looking at the draft and giving some feedback to us about the stories, go find the typos because we really have the faculty to edit anymore, you know, and there's some revision to be done on this one, too. But as a work in progress, we would really appreciate your feedback on the kinds of stories that we're presenting, you know, the information that's here. And also, another thing is that, one thing that I'm very aware of, is who loves to write and loves to read, is that it may be a little bit too much writing, you know? And should we be carrying this way back and putting more photos in? I mean, a lot of photos, but maybe we really do need less information, not more.
Maybe bigger photos, too.
Maybe bigger photos, yeah. And we're tying this then to our website content, our Facebook content, Twitter feeds, just using all of the technology at our disposal to make sure that the community is aware of the good work of our students and our teachers. So that's our primary focus. And one of the big events is that we're, is the one we're hosting next Thursday at Cinemopolis called The Power of Project-Based Learning, which is a screening of. Let's trace the, the program materials. Thank you. It's okay, we can just walk. So, so this event at Cinemopolis is a screening of a documentary about High Tech High at Charter High School in California that focuses on project-based learning. And it's a phenomenal film. It was actually screened also at IHS in December. And Rebecca and I went to watch it. And it's, it's just amazing to see, like, I mean, that, that school takes what we do one step further. And part of the reason is they don't have every exams that they need to be focusing on. So they really break down far more of the barriers.
So it's not New York, you know?
Right, it's not New York, it is California. They do have tests that they use to assess literacy and mathematics skills, which is responsible to do. But. But, um, I, I invite all of you to come out to see what it looks like, what students really can take it to the next level of, you know, working in teams to solve real problems and make things happen in their education. I mean, this is really, um, very exciting stuff. Um, Ithaca College, Cornell University's Education Minor Alternative Federal Credit Union are, are sponsoring and supporting the event. And, um, we have colleges of education coming out, uh, you know, bringing their students out, which we're, um, planning to have a table, you know, encouraging people that are interested in the kind of education that we, interested in teaching a school that offers this kind of education, um, to see us sign up for student teaching here. Um, you know, looking at this as a way of, you know, encouraging teachers that are teachers in training to learn more about our school. And, um, you know, bringing out parents hoping community members come. And I think it's a really great opportunity for us to educate our wider community about how charter schools can positively impact public education. I mean, the Ithaca City School District is interested in innovative practices like this. And in a large system like, like Ithaca High School, it can be difficult for people who want to implement something innovative to actually do it. So one service that charter schools can provide is being that living laboratory, um, of, that, you know, to invite people in to see how it's working, how it's not working, you know, and support the, the efforts of people in our school district. So, so that is, um, that is our aspiration. So we're also doing events like, we have a potluck coming up for parent, for families that are homeschooling so that they can, you know, come together and learn, not only learn about New Roots, but also meet other families of formerly homeschooling students and, you know, and network there. We have a FAFSA workshop coming up to, not only for our families, but we've publicized this amongst, um, families in, in the other school districts. So they know that they can come and, and learn how to fill out a financial aid form for college.
Can I have a word for doing that a little earlier next year?
Mm-hmm, earlier in the, earlier.
So, you know, currently, I'm in the college application process and it's comfortable.
When is it due?
For, I've had colleges who would do, um, in the beginning of, I mean, in the beginning.
So this is probably.
January fifth, I think I had some other two.
But, but the real key is the sooner you get your FAFSA in, the greater your chances of getting in. Because the money gets parceled out first come, first served by most schools. And so if you're not in there early, you might lose out even though you are otherwise well qualified.
Yeah, this really probably should be a program in October along with college search type, I mean, training stuff. Because parents really need, you know, what they need to be pulling together. Cause it's not just your tax return, it's, it's other things. I only know cause I did a happy dance in December when I got an email about FAFSA's being due soon. Alright, well, point, point well taken. So last month, we had, uh, events of featuring our alumni. And, um, we're, we're working on getting our alumni's stories onto, onto our website so that people can see, you know, just the, the wide array of, you know, things that students are doing after their New Roots, which is pretty exciting. We just learned today that we have one of our students who's at TC three, the Electrical Engineering Program, was named a teaching assistant. And, um, so, you know, and was celebrating that with a family and just, you know. Just waiting till Kelsey gets her graduation certificate, all doing a happy dance.
It's nice to see for, for C six two classes, see how well they're doing. Because that's the first.
That's right. Thank you very much, Joe.
Yeah, I apologize to everyone, I, I've got another appointment. It truly means I have to leave at six thirty on Thursdays, unfortunately.
We'll look at the schedule a little bit about how we need to plan for that. So.
Kind of fun joke.
Trying to be very.
Just got only two things to talk about.
And they answer any questions about, um, and about outreach.
Sorry, make sure we have those, those, those.
You can ask Tracy back there.
Sorry, it's alright.
What's available we have on the list?
So, the next, um, next thing up is the treasurer's report. And they're, uh, so since Joe, yeah, oh, he's still not in the forum, so, uh, we can still pick about it when it comes. Alright, next up is the treasurer's report.
Okay, um, this treasurer's report is as of last week. Um, the numbers were as of, I think, one twenty-one or one twenty-two. Um, Diane spent a lot of time showing us what was expended through one eleven, but she reviewed it as, you know, what we expect to spend for the rest of the year. I will note that, um, the last projection that was given at the last month's meeting was, um, not being correct, but cash basis as opposed to compared to the budget. So when it should, when we reported that we were looking, even with our lower than budgeted FTEs, we were looking at a positive bottom line of fourteen thousand. That was before depreciation and amortization expenses, which are non-cash. But in order to compare to the budget, we really have to look at everything, including those non-cash expenses. So if we had reported on the budget gap accounting basis, we would have been showing negative thirty-six thousand last time compared to negative forty-three thousand is what I'm projecting right now. Now, that forty-three thousand dollar deficit at the end of the year is, um, we're budgeting eight or nine students lower than what, we're, we're projecting eight or nine in FTEs lower than what we budgeted, okay? We're, um, we're projecting about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars less in revenues. About fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars more in payroll. Part of that being because of the contractual payment for returning teachers, et cetera. But our operating expenses other than payroll are down about, they're looking like they're gonna be lower by about a hundred thousand dollars. So for a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in less net projected revenues, we think we're gonna have a net deficit of forty-three thousand dollars. That's not bad. That's really not bad. That means that our staff again is doing the own its work on cutting any fat. They're seeing through a little muscle maybe here or there, but doing a really good job on lowering necessary expenses in order to meet where we're gonna, where we need to be at the end of the year. What that works out to be is about a ten thousand dollar cash bound reserve leftover compared to the said fourteen, fifteen thousand last times. So changed by about five thousand dollars, it went down. But if you look at it on the cash basis, we should end up with about ten or, so a thousand dollars net cash. So that, our net cash improvement because depreciation is just a cost of products over time. That forty-three thousand and that thirty-six thousand that I'm referring to from the last, um, projection does include the budget change of the, we budgeted or we voted in July, I believe, after the budget had been passed to approve a budgetary expense of up to twenty-five thousand for those Chromebooks. So that forty-three thousand dollar deficit includes the expenditure of that twenty-three thousand and change on those Chromebooks. So we were able to increase our students' technology abilities and still get that, so that's not bad either. Because we knew that bottom line of the budget actually went from a basically positive zero was gonna go to negative twenty-three because of the budget change that we approved.
Okay, I think you've mentioned this already and it just went quite fine. What, how does this compare to when we ended up last year?
Well, last year, we ended up at positive seventy-three, that's that fourteen, fifteen column. It says estimate, but those are actuals. We, we've gotten a little better changing the titles. We changed this so it actually shows this year fifteen, sixteen.
Okay, so this isn't an estimate then?
That's not an estimate. But again, that was on about a hundred fifty students.
Yeah, that's really the key issue.
So it's enrollment, enrollment.
Enrollment.
Enrollment, um, you know.
Fication, fication.
Well, exactly, you know. So, um, again, the staff, I mean, it's not a great number, but it's a lot better than it could be because the staff and the faculty and everybody are doing really good work on managing those non-fixed costs. So anything that can be adjusted is being adjusted, so. And I'm gonna say right now that we're very lucky that we're having the winter we're having because our utility bills are actually gonna come in lower than, um, quite honestly, that's, you know.
That, the fact that Solly or maybe is, until today, refused to cut back their production.
It's probably, you know, so you take, you, you get happy about that low hanging fruit, like, okay, so it shouldn't be thirty degrees in, or forty or fifty degrees in January in upstate New York, but okay, it's, it's gonna help us. And that's probably not your budget necessarily in these numbers because.
Don't worry about the fact that dappled is already out.
Yeah, March, March, it's gonna be a little sparse on the flowers, but, you know. So that's, that's the treasurer's report.
Great, thank you. Alright, so we passed out, uh, the minutes from the last one.
Could I just ask one more, just a quick question?
Sure.
Uh, what are we looking at in terms of, uh, base to build the budget on the next year, in terms of?
Not many of it, a little bit. Well, I think what we'll do is we'll, I mean, our last two years, our incoming freshman class has been in that, that rate of our adjusted enrollment as we, as we does the ASO of thirty-five to forty students. And so that's, we look at our knife and we would just move everybody ahead a year and add our new forty students coming in as freshmen.
So what, what would that come to then?
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty?
It just, I mean, we built it on a hundred and fifty this year, right?
No.
So what did we build it on?
No, we budgeted four, a hundred and forty.
Hundred and forty-one.
Hundred and forty-one. I'm just thinking that it might be better to build a budget that has some kind of margin. Uh, and if there's money left to be spent, I'm sure we can figure out a way to spend it. So instead of building a budget on a hundred, like, you know, we're thinking we're gonna have a hundred and fifty, then you built the budget on a hundred and forty.
Yeah, I think that was.
Well, that was kind of what we did this year. We built it on a hundred and forty-one, I did. We were hoping we were gonna more, but we.
We were hoping for a hundred and fifty.
Right. But we didn't budget for what we hoped. You can't budget.
Well, no, and that's why I'm saying that, I'm thinking the, the hundred and fifty number should, we should have a reasonable expectation rather than a hope.
I think that what we'll look at for next year would be, um, what can we do with what we have this year, right? And so it's a, you know, and, and then look and see what we have additional to spend. You know, I think that accomplishes what you're.
Yeah.
What you're aiming at.
Cause there aren't so many years we could run a deficit and there's no more cash reserve or less.
And that also.
He's pulling off some really fancy tricks.
I do, um, I do wanna say that, um, we still, it'll be interesting to see what we act, how we actually end up at the end of the year, right?
Sure.
Because, um, we're very close actually to, other than that, twenty-three thousand dollars. You know, we'll see how we can use our resources for the second half of the year.
Alright, so, uh, we passed out the minutes from the last meeting. Uh, long set, we wasn't doing a lot of stuff last time. Uh, so, these were emailed to everybody? Does anybody have any, uh, comments, suggestions, corrections? Is your name spelled right?
Were you here?
Alright, in that case, then I move to accept these minutes by your second, seconded by Katie. But one more chance for corrections, improvements, discussions. All those in favor of accepting these minutes, please raise your hand. And it is unanimous.
Should I abstain? Cause I wasn't here.
Shouldn't you should.
Yes, you should, we still have enough people.
I get to last round.
Right, so, uh, it passes over five. So these are approved minutes, we can give these to Joe. Does anybody else have any, um, any announcements, any issues they wanna bring up in terms of our time out tonight? Or, or make sure that we're gonna put on the agenda for next round?
Alright.
Oh, go ahead. Just a, a brief thing, um, that might be nice to, connects to attendance, so I'm sorry I didn't bring it up when we were talking about that. But there's certainly a correlation between attendance and performance. And this is something I've talked about with Tina a little bit. Um, with using the Google Classroom this year, one of the things that, that I'm realizing, that I always kinda knew, but it's, you know, at, at the forefront. You know, with, with having that as a platform for students to use, um, having posted what we do on a given day with a video that we can refer to or, or something that they can, they can use. There are, um, a number of students, like five that I can think of, that, that did have attendance problems with some of the classes. Especially with the first period class that I had. That did end up doing pretty well, that, that ended up passing a few students who were in that A, B range. Um, and it's making me think a lot about, you know, those students were able to do that because they had, you know, they had the interest and they had the drive, but they also had those organizational skills and those, that resourcefulness to be able to, you know, know I missed a day, but I know where I am in the class. I know where to look, uh, and know where to go. And so I think that there are kind of two, a few layers to that, just from my perspective. There's the layer of, like, yes, some students aren't able to come, but then there's the layer of, like, I'm thinking a lot about how can I better teach students these organizational skills to, um, you know, cause some students are proving that. They're able to stay current and able to perform well academically, even if they, even if they miss. You know, the science of math, it's really hard to, even if you miss five classes, you know, it's, it's tough. So, so it's been helpful for some students and it's really limited, really this issue of resourcefulness, ability to use. To use resources, so.
I believe that we adjourn this meeting, seconded by all those in favor. And we are adjourned at six forty-two.